Well, good morning. It's Wednesday, June 22, 2016. We're here for our weekly Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. If you will join us, and we'll start off with the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Feels good to be back in the USA and say the Pledge of Allegiance to start off our day. I always like that. We have, nobody signed up for public comment this morning, so we can go right into our consent calendar.
You should explain you've been some.
I've, yeah, I've been in, I was in Indonesia for a week. Wonderful country, but I, I'll share more later about the trip.
Because if people think they have it bad here, there's other places.
Oh, yeah, like the executions and.
Chair Cameron, if I could, I'd make the most to approve the consent calendar this morning on it. Under Board of Commissioners, we consider approval of the restated intergovernmental agreement with Polk County for the creation of the Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network to provide management of regional behavioral, behavioral health services. Under Health Improvement Number Five to the intergovernmental agreement with Yamhill County to extend through June 30, 2016, and adding $22,535.65 in funding for the Mobile Crisis Response Services. We approve an order reappointing Kerry Fisk Sessoms, Wendy Hollahan, Dana Kleis, and Ray Wilson to the Local Alcohol and Drug Planning Committee with a term ending June 30, 2018. Public Works consider approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation for $600,000 in incoming funds for Public Works to provide chip seal application on a portion of Highway 214.
I'll second the motion.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the consent calendar? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Couple of action items today, but they're to be followed up after our public hearings, if I understand this correctly. And our public hearing isn't until 9:30.
So why don't you tell us about your trip now?
All right. So. Well, good morning, Ken.
He wants to start his presentation, but do yours first.
Can we do that now?
You're not going to take 30 minutes to do a presentation, are you? Okay, all right.
Yeah, so I got to go over there with a group from Corbin University. And we spent four days in the city of Jakarta, which I, I've got video of the traffic. Obviously, they drive on the wrong side of the road. Because they were a Dutch, Dutch and British colony years ago, they drive on the left side of the road.
It's the other side of the road, not the wrong side of the road.
Well, yeah, well, to me, it's the wrong side of the road. And in fact, while we were there, there was a van taxi that we were getting into. And one of the guys said, hey, there's, there's an opening in the front seat. And he was looking over on the, the right side of the car. Nobody was sitting in there. And so one of our guys went around and got in there, and he realized he was in the driver's seat of the taxi.
Did you drive ever?
I never drove. Dick Withnell was there with us, and he got in the, the bus. And I was, I was thinking he was gonna, he was honking a horn, he was gonna take off. But we got to see the university over there, that there's an individual who helps or actually basically started the university, and it's a private school. And they have about 1,200 students graduate every year. 233 were educators, and Corbin does a dual degree over there. And then we got to do some really fun exploring. Got to see the Komodo dragons.
No, thank you.
Which is something very few people get to see. The fruit bats that fly from Mangold. How do you say that, Richard?
Mangrove?
Mangrove Island. They stay on it all day long, and at 6 o'clock at night, they literally fly to another island where they eat all night, and then they fly back in the morning. So there were some really great things to see. They have some real challenges over there with pollution. Much like China, there was a lot of smog and, and pollution in the city of Jakarta. We did get to spend some time with the, at the US. What do I want to say? Embassy. Saw the US Embassy. And got to meet the gentleman who was gonna be leaving in two months. He's been there for about five years, I think. Three years, something like that. Talked about education and the education programs there. And they have students that come over here as well, so it was a good trip.
Was water an issue for pollution, or what did you see there?
Oh, yeah. In the hotel, one of the hotels that we were staying in, you look down and there's a river right below it. And people live on this river. It's, it's, it was filthy. Stuff floating everywhere. A lot of the garbage is dumped in the ocean and in the water. They've got some real issues with the environment over there.
So you drank bottled water?
Drank bottled water. Or when, in the hotels, they have purification system in some of the hotels. So I never felt bad at all. There was people in our group that, you know, on a daily basis, somebody was having some problem, but I never felt bad. In fact, today, I feel like I have a cold from being back. So the food was good, healthy, lots of fruit. And then we went to this fishing village, Sam. You know, you're a fisherman. We went to this fishing village that was so poor. I mean, it was really amazing how the kids were so happy, but they had nothing there. And the way they were fishing, Sam, they literally had lines, and they were out in their boats, and they're pulling them in by hand. No poles, no nets.
And big fish, or?
You know, medium-sized fish. I don't know. We ate some fish while we were there.
So are the people happy? What do you, what do you see?
Yeah, I, I would say that they are very content and very happy with what they have. I was on this one island where they came, vendors came and, you know, to sell us pearls and stuff like that. And a little kid was there, just happy as, and, and he pointed to my bracelets. Remember I had the, the Hands Are Not For Hurting bracelet I had on for two years? And I had an ALS bracelet, and he pointed to my bracelets, and I was able to give one of them to one kid. And I asked him to, to pray for my friend in, in US that had ALS. And through an interpreter, I was able to tell him about that, and he put it on his ankle. He thought that was so cool. And then the other kid took the Hands Are Not For Hurting, and he put it on his ankle. But those kids just seemed like they were happy, you know, I mean, content, but they didn't have a lot. I think you come, you go there and you see that, and you come back and you really appreciate where you live. Mr. Latimer, are you ready to give us a presentation?
He's looking for a bracelet.
You want one of those bracelets? I got some up in my office.
I have one in mine also.
Because he, he needs to know about words, and what he does to people. It'd be a good lesson.
I know all about pain, Commissioner.
So you're gonna give us a presentation, right? And we can do that before our public hearing?
Yes, we could.
All right.
But you're still gonna have to wait till 9:30 to do the public hearing.
So he's gonna have to talk for 20 minutes?
Well, why don't you go ahead and give us your presentation, and we'll see how long we have to wait.
Oh, Mr. Chair Commissioners, as you know, and for our audience on television, the Budget Committee approves, I present a budget to the Budget Committee. Budget Committee approves a budget, and now here today, we're here for the Board to adopt the 2016-17 county budget. So let me very quickly run through some key things on the budget. Some of this you've heard before because it was from my budget message. One of the things, and I talk about this a lot because I think it's important. One of the things that we tried when we came here with the Commissioners is to create an enterprise approach to managing county government. It took a while. There's a difference between an enterprise government and a centralized government, very much so. But because of that enterprise approach, we've been able to provide services across county department lines in a way that provides services very professionally and innovative programs for the citizens of Marion County. And we're pretty proud of that. I think a good example of that is the, the fact that the sheriff and our Health Department are providing clinicians to ride along with both city police and sheriff's officers to deal with mentally ill rather than running into folks because they're mentally ill and having problems with them and taking them to jail. In my opinion, the jail is no place for the mentally ill. We need, because we have a crisis, the Health Department runs a crisis center. We have a place for the mentally ill to be treated very quickly, and that's worked very well. Another thing that's, the Juvenile Department is working with families in Marion County to try and actually prevent juveniles from entering into a life of crime because not only do we then have the problems of those juveniles creating issues for our citizens, but they can, if not dealt with properly, graduate into the adult system. So one of the things I think that, that we've been able to create is a very professional set of services for our, for our citizens. And, and in many cases, very innovative. In fact, Marion County is known throughout the state as being one of the most innovative and in many, many programs, the best in the state. Let me talk a little bit about what, what it is that drives this budget. The local, local economy here in Marion County continues to grow. We added 5,300 jobs last year, our 3%, 4% growth rate. Unemployment rate in Salem is a low, or in the state, is the lowest since World War II. And, and on top of that, our county, number of county employees has grown to the highest number historically that we've had, to 1,425, 1,426 county employees. A lot of those are in public safety, but a larger percentage are with the Health Department. Property taxes have also grown. Our Council of Economic Advisers projects that we'll have a 4.95% increase in property taxes. The biggest costs in our budget are clearly personnel. And it's interesting that out of those personnel costs, total fringe benefits are 35% of the total personnel cost. And that's $48.9 million. Health benefits cost $23 million per 17.7. So we have those costs that keep rising. One of the things that worries us about the future is that we're told that PERS costs could increase by 10 to 20% a biennium for the foreseeable future. That's probably about a million, million and a half a year just increased PERS costs. So we're concerned about that. The other, a large part of this budget, one of the things that we've been doing, rather than increasing programs other than those created by state government or the federal government, is we've been using these increases in property taxes to take care of our infrastructure. We have some very, very old buildings that have been used to provide services since the early 70s. The buildings are in bad shape, so we have put together a program to, to retrofit those buildings. The Health Building, for example, on, on Center Street, was built in 1974. It has every problem you can imagine, from HVAC issues to asbestos and elevators that don't work very well. And when you have people in wheelchairs, it helps to have, have elevators that work. So we are going to fix those, that building. It will be done this fall. We're also going to have, build a new courtroom for the juvenile campus and remediate the old Juvenile Department Administrative Building. In addition, we're going to build a new parole and probation building. The current parole and probation building has been there for, holy Toledo, 20 years? I think, and it was a temporary building, and it's so temporary that it's beginning to fall apart. So we're gonna build a new one for parole and probation. We have a very innovative parole and probation program in Marion County which has helped reduce recidivism rate for people going to jail a great deal. So we're going to do that, and we're also going to build a, a, what do you call it? For the sheriff.
Operations.
No, a.
Command center?
Command center for the sheriff. And he doesn't have one now. We'll be moving people out of leased facilities after we get that built. So it will save money in the long run. Of course, this creates debt service, and unfortunately, we have long ago created debt service to build this building, Courthouse Square, to, we have two pension obligation to, you know, PERS was charging us 8% on our unfunded liabilities, so we sold pension bonds for 4%. So we were saving 4% on, on our costs for PERS with the Public Employees Retirement System itself. And, and so we have all those bonds that we're paying. We have total debt service of $8 million. So the total budget is $387,937,501. Of that, $88 million is general fund. The vast majority of our funds are non-general fund, and a lot of that is in the Health Department and Public Works, which, so you have, in the Health Department, you have a lot of Medicaid dollars, and in Public Works, gas tax money, and also environmental services, cost for garbage disposal. The departments propose 25 decision packages. I approve 13 of those. And they're listed here on the screen. We added a human resources specialist in the Business Services Department to do classification and compensation studies for our employees. We've added an economic development coordinator for the Community Services Department to help in our expanded economic development program. We've added a department specialist for the District Attorney and a new juvenile dependency prosecutor for the juvenile department, or the District Attorney's Office working at the juvenile department. We've also added a care coordinator, youth support partners, and peer support specialists for a juvenile wraparound program for juveniles with use of clinicians at the Health Department. In juvenile, we've, we're leasing juvenile detention beds with Lynn County, primarily for weekends when the detention center is full. Doesn't happen very often, maybe two or three times a year, but we need those additional beds. We're providing probation officer vests, information technology. One of the key new items we're putting in the jail is a new phone switch. It's really important that you have constant communications with the Sheriff's Office. And there's a great deal of software and hardware maintenance costs. Public Works is putting signs, new signs, at our parks, particularly in the North Fork. Sheriff's Office, one of the problems with 911 is those costs keep increasing. And so we've added money for a dispatch service cost increase and a new North Sandy M Canyon Patrol Deputy. One of the things that during the budget hearings with the Budget Committee, the Budget Committee has added three decision package. One for community services, a receptionist. As you know, we've added a lot of programs to community services, and they're just up against it with the workload they have. They need somebody to help with that. We've added dollars to the Health Department for vector control in case we have a problem with Zitka virus here in Oregon. And that will be, take, that will add vector control officer to that. And we're adding a case aid worker for the juvenile department. The juvenile probation folks have so much paperwork they have to deal with that they had to spend the time with that rather than with the juveniles. So we're gonna add this caseworker to help them with that paperwork. So here is a list of the departments and their budgets. You can see that the largest budgets are, of course, Public Works, Sheriff's Office, and Health Department. It's interesting to note, if I can find that here, that 78% of the budget is in three departments, Public Works, Sheriff, and Health Department. 90% is in about six departments. So most of the departments are very small, have very small budgets. We have non-departmental funds, which are dollars spent, not for any particular department. Out of the general fund, these are mostly transfers out, and they're transferred mostly to other departments. But we also have things like the ending fund balance contingency and facility remediation dollars in there. But thing, large things like debt service and self-insurance fund. The self-insurance fund is where we pay for our health insurance, workers' comp, and the like. Big part of this budget is, as I said earlier, infrastructure needs. The, the Health Department is winding down, so this is only the, the final payment for that. It's really a total cost of about seven and a half million. The juvenile campus, $6 million, and the, all of the work at the juvenile, Sheriff's Juvenile Complex is part of that. The, the additional building improvements, a big part of that cost is for the work center on the jails camp, on the jail campus, where the roof and the HVAC system has gone bad, and the roof, it needs to be replaced. It's leaking. And then, of course, we have a contingency. So all, including Public Works projects, total all projects for capital is $38 million. So, you know, we have in our rules, we are required to have reserves. And you see here, we have a general fund contingency of $1,200,000. Unappropriated ending fund balance is $5.6 million. We still have a rainy day fund of $2.2 million, for a total of $9 million. That's about a reserves of 11.3%. As you know, the GFOA recommends somewhere between 10 and 15% reserves for public budgets. So this is the Budget Committee approved budget of $387,985,501. The approved budget includes $88 million in general fund. And they recommend that the Board, and I recommend that the Board adopt the budget. Oops. This would be the, this should be the adopted budget. Let me see here. Yes, this is the budget that you would adopt with the resolution you have before you. So once again, I thank the Budget Team that helps me put this together. And particularly Rich Miniker, sitting back there to answer any technical questions. So, questions?
So I do have a question. Thank you for your presentation, and Rich, for all your work, and Jeff, who's not here with us today, all, all the people that put this together.
And Jan Fritz, yeah.
Yeah, Jan upstairs. On page four, John, the Budget Officer's proposed budget is $387,937,501. Yet the approved budget that we're going, the budget that we're going to approve is $387,985,501, about, not about, it's $48,000 difference. And it just happens to coincide with somebody's priority of some mosquito abatement or something. Vector control. Vector control.
Very serious and important.
We needed some of that in Indonesia when I was there. What can you share with us, why those two numbers are different?
Well, I will attempt to explain that, Commissioner, and if I don't explain it quite properly, Rich is here to back me up. Right, Rich? We, the Budget Committee approved or added three decision packages totaling $171,305. They all came out of the general fund contingency. Two of those went from the general fund contingency to general fund programs, back into the general fund, only specify for particular programs. The third one, the vector control one, was appropriated again out of the ending, the contingency, but it was appropriated to a juvenile non-general fund. So that $48,000 that was put into the vector control program is essentially double counted because it's counted in the general fund, and it's counted in the health fund. That's why it's different. The $48,000 is now added to the total.
Mr. Chair, as we talked about yesterday, it could have been just added to the Health Department's general fund and not double counted.
I would think.
Right.
But we don't do things that way. We, we like to make it more complicated.
So not to think I actually got twice as much as I asked for.
No, no.
I thought I was really effective.
Yeah, you are, but you only got $48,000.
But you'll be wishing you had it all someday.
Well, which leads us to the conclusion that there are other things in this budget that are counted twice as well. So it's interesting to think about what, if you were to squeeze it all down, what our budget number really is. Probably not $390 million.
No, it's not.
Yeah, it's the same way at the state, double counting.
Rich wants to talk.
Oh, Rich wants to correct me.
Can you come up and correct Mr. Latimer?
I'm not correcting Mr. Latimer. I'm just anticipating such question might happen. And I'm telling you, when we put in our budget, our published budget book, not necessarily what goes to the Budget Committee, although I think this is in there too, there's always a statement that talks about the double counting.
Rich, off the microphone. Rich, off the microphone.
Yeah.
So the true budget is what, the 309 million? Oh, total direct, 269 million? So it's the bolded in the bottom?
So if you look, if you look at this table, you'll see that there's total direct expenditures. That would really be the cash outlay if we were to spend at all, and of course, we don't spend all of our budget, so that's the cash outlay. And then down at that paragraph I put a mark by, it tells you about how some things are double counted, transfers and internal trans, internal transactions too, which are the administrative charges. When one department charges other departments for their services, that ends up being double counted. So really, the total direct expenditures is, is a key one in terms of something for the public to know, and actually, the GFOA best budget practices encourages this statement to be in every budget document, so people understand that, no, we're not going to spend $387 million. It's, it's not that much with the double counting. And so the $48,000 is double counted, added, is added to the health budget, it increases the total budget.
So if I could ask, so if it were squeezed completely down, it would be the 269 million? Because the administrative charges are also a...
Off set, right.
Right, okay.
Yeah, right.
Interesting.
So, follow up, and this is, this is good conversation to have, to understand this. On the contingencies and the reserves, so the, the contingency, because Mr. Latimer mentioned our ending fund balance, the rainy day fund, the third one was in here.
Contingency.
Contingencies was nine million something. So that's actual cash that's sitting, or we're not going to, we're not budgeted to spend.
Well, no, that's not quite true. The ending fund balance is not budgeted to spend. The contingency is. We can spend the contingency.
Right.
We can't spend the ending fund balance.
Okay. So, but when you look at the contingency on this, that you just handed out, Richard, it's, you got, so what do I have to do to get to that number that you mentioned, John, based on what Richard just handed out?
Which number?
The nine million that's on your presentation, the 11% that we said, because you're using that as a, as a percentage of the general fund of the 80 million, right?
Well, you have to add in the rainy day fund, which is unappropriated, so it's a reserve. The ending fund balance and the contingency.
Okay, so there's the 1.4, the 5663, and then the rainy day fund will add up to that nine million.
Two, two, yeah.
Okay, got it. Great, thank you. Wow, I understand it.
I don't lie too much.
I hope I understand it. I think we're at 9:30.
We are, I agree.
We're past 9:30, wow. I didn't need to talk so long about Indonesia.
Well, John did his part to make sure that we met the time.
So we are going to...
You know, you can't keep me down, Commissioner.
Well, I was thinking that you took an hour and 10 minutes, or whatever, the first time, so 20 shouldn't be a challenge.
Do you want to do the supplemental first? Okay, so we will open a public hearing to consider adopting the fiscal year 2016-17 budget and make related appropriations and impose categories, property taxes. All right, public hearing. Richard, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I am Rich Miniker from the Finance Department. I'm here to present the third supplemental budget request for the Marion County Fiscal Year 2015.
Richard, let me just interrupt, just, just for the record, we will open a public hearing on this supplemental budget as well, so we'll do them both at the same time.
Oh.
I opened a public hearing on the 16-17 budget.
I'm sorry, you mentioned my name, so I started out.
What's that?
We'll do two, we'll do two separate motions, but that's...
At the end.
Okay, well, let me, let me open a public hearing on the supplemental budget. Sorry for the confusion.
My bad.
Well, no, if I just, if I did what was in order of the agenda, I, I probably would not have messed up, but you know me, I just go off and do something different.
He's doing it legislative style, where they can open a hearing on like five million bills at the same time.
All right, sorry to interrupt.
Oregon revised statutes require that increases in appropriation authority from the original adopted budget must be adopted by the governing body. Public notice of this supplemental budget was published in the Statesman Journal newspaper in accordance with statutory requirements. The third supplemental budget decreases the total budget by $4,162,813. The revised budget is $391,771,858. I will review budget change highlights and state amounts to the nearest thousand dollars. Details about the supplemental budget have been reviewed by the commissioners. The general fund total budget will not change, but there are several offsetting changes to requirements categories. Transfers out has a net decrease of $152,000 comprised of a $503,000 decrease in transfers to the debt services fund, partially offset by a $285,000 increase in transfers to the capital improvement projects fund and a $65,000 increase in transfers to the parks fund. The $503,000 savings from the transfer out decrease is allocated to ending fund balance. Contingency is reduced $350,000 to fund the other two transfer increases. Here we go with these transfers in, transfers out, always get a little complex. The capital improvement projects fund budget will increase $404,000. Revenue includes the previously discussed $285,000 transfer from the general fund plus transfers totaling $57,000 from three other funds. Settlement revenue is increased $72,000 for an insurance reimbursement related to courthouse square roof repair. Capital outlay is allocated $477,000 for five projects utilizing the additional revenue and by a decrease in contingency, $74,000. The community services grant fund budget will increase $97,000 from additional state revenue passed through the Willamette Valley Community Health Coordinated Care Organization for a family checkup grant. The funds are allocated to contracted services for training workshops and seminars. The facility renovation fund budget will decrease 5 million as a loan for major capital projects is deferred until the upcoming fiscal year 2016-17. Capital outlay contingency and ending fund balance are reduced in total by a corresponding 5 million. The reason we why, we'd like to take that 5,000, $5 million out of the budget is because when we publish the budget book for 16-17, it'll show the budget for 15-16 alongside, in the column alongside of it. We wouldn't want to show $5 million budgeted for loans, if the public or anyone reading that might think that we're, we have $9,950,000 in 16-17, they might think that that 5 million is in addition to that 9,950, so we're taking it out because we're not using it, it's rolling into the next year. The health fund budget will increase $605,000 primarily from new intergovernmental grants. Personal services increases slightly by $15,000. Materials and services increases $126,000 to reflect the cost of expanding service delivery in several programs. A $162,000 increase in capital outlay includes an enhancement to the phone system at the psychiatric crisis center. $302,000 is allocated to ending fund balance to be carried forward for future fiscal year services. The parks fund budget will increase $92,000. Federal grants from the Forest Service and Bureau of Land Management total $25,000. There is a general fund transfer of $65,000 and a $2,000 transfer from the Lottery and Economic Development Fund. This revenue combined with $15,000 savings from other parks projects provides funding for a North Fork park, parking improvement project. A 7,000 reduction in contingency allows for an allocation to a Salmon Falls stairway construction project. The Public Works Fund budget will increase $104,000. Federal revenue increased by this amount with the receipt of four emergency management and preparedness grants. The funds are allocated to field supplies, communications, equipment, and contracted services. Contingency was reduced $8,000 to purchase computer equipment, software, and office equipment by, for use by new emergency management staff. Are there any questions?
Questions, comments?
Really, Don, I read through it. I was gone for the management update meeting, but Jeff White provided me a copy, so.
Yeah, good detail.
Took a look at it, it's what we need to do right before we approve the budget, so everything's lined up in the last year and it's transparent reflects what we're actually doing instead of what we thought we might do six or more months ago, so.
And I like the $17,000 for the stairway at the Salmon Falls. It looked really good last week when I, or two weeks ago when I was up there seeing it, so, yeah, thank you. It's coming along really good. Hopefully we get the parking lot done soon. Thank you, Richard. Any, and, what's that?
I need 7,000.
7,000? Oh, I thought I heard 17,000. I know there is nobody I see, nobody signed up for a, a public comment. Would you like to close? Anything else you want to add? No?
No, not me.
Okay. Entertain a motion.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move that we close the public hearing on the third supplemental budget and adopt the third supplemental budget for fiscal, fiscal year 2015-16 as presented.
Second.
A motion of second. Any further discussion? Nice work, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Now we can open a public hearing on the 2016-17 budget. We've heard your presentation. Any questions or comments? Nobody signed up for public hearing, or for public comment, so John, do you want to add anything before we...
I don't believe so, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
And one, little one, I hate to show my ignorance always, and it's a minor item, but I was just looking at the Sandy M. Canyon Patrol, and it's like $110,000, but it seems like there'd be a lot more cost than that when you get car equipment. How do you break that out, or do you just...
That, that's the cost of the salary for the, for the officer.
And so what happens to the rest of expenses and...
Well, the cars are part of the Public Works budget in fleet.
And gas, that you don't go specific to where it goes.
No, they already have gas in their budget.
Just curious.
Just to clarify, that's full package, right? Benefit package, benefits, etc.
Right, that's, that's correct.
Not the salary. Any other questions? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
Okay, Chair Cameron, I, well, it seems like there's always something tricky here, and I'm just going to try to catch it, I will. Make a motion, we close the public hearing, and we adopt the fiscal year 2016-17 budget, make related appropriations, impose and categorize property taxes, and approve the resolution.
All right, I'll second the motion.
Yeah, motion second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to just make a quick comment. First of all, this was a very smooth budget process, and really, again, appreciate all the work of the staff, and it's Rich Miniker, correct?
It's Brad.
And not Jan Fritz, it's Jan Fritz, right? Okay.
Did I say Fritz?
You said Miniker.
Oh, I do that all the time.
I know, I thought you did it because you were trying to tease him, so I wanted to make sure we made, we made that very clear. And...
Richard loves it when I do that.
Right. So the other part is that I just wanted to thank the budget team for accommodating the commissioners' requests this year. We, we went through a long drought, I guess, in the budget, where the economy was in recession, our property taxes were actually not keeping up with the increased costs that we experience in healthcare and our, and, and ours primarily. Our employees didn't have raises for, what, six years, a very long time? And there really was not room in the budget for any types of initiatives that, as commissioners, we see the need in the community and we want to do good things, but, you know, we have a primary responsibility to sustain the core services that we do. So I think with the additional packages that we've approved, and, and I know the, the one that I was wishing for, which was in the juvenile department, we just had a discussion, I'm trying to think, it was yesterday or the day before, where Fay was in, it was yesterday morning at System of Care, and, and Judge Lindsay Partridge was there, and talking about the, just the need that they have out there for mental health services and placements for kids, and, and then we were at the Pay for Success meeting, that was the other one, looking at the amount of time. Did you know that it takes eight hours as on, in general, for the pro, the probation officers to just process one of the, the youth, in terms of the court paperwork, the assessments, all of that? And so in doing that, they're not doing the counseling with the families, you know, and so this case aid, I think, is really going to help offload some of that administrative work that they're doing, and allow those probation officers to do what they need to do best, which is to interface with families and youth and try to help put them on the, on the right course. So I know the, the one that I was hoping for was really important, we've talked a lot about vector control, and I know Commissioner Cameron, you had, trying to remember which one yours was, it was in...
It was the community services.
Economic.
Administrative.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, the economic, the economic development person's in there too, but we, I mean, there's, there's some substantial changes. I, you know, I think last year I said we, and John in his budget presentation said we're not expanding programs and we're going to invest in infrastructure. This year, we're kind of doing both, where we're actually doing, doing, adding some staff as well as doing the infrastructure. And I just, I think the, the infrastructure projects, thank you very much, those are really critical, that we get those done for the future, long-term health of, of our employees and our citizens in Marion County, public safety issues, and it's, it's great that we're able to be able to, to do that, and that'd be my comment, and those, it's going to be a two or three-year project, but...
And then while we did not have anyone that came in for the public hearing today, the, this budget was duly noticed, and the Statesman Journal actually saw the entire budget by program area was, was listed, it was quite a large public notice, and we've made it available on our website, and we have it at the front counter when people, if they want to come in and see the budget. So we've taken every opportunity that we can do without spending a lot of additional taxpayer dollars in advertising to make sure that people are aware and want to engage the public with our budget to the extent that they're interested in doing so.
Okay, anything else, Sam?
Well, I don't want to get mushy, but I wanted to say something, I was going to say it when John was up there, so I won't look at him, but I'll just, I just want to, you know, talk about good things. I want to thank John for the good things he does and the good things he facilitates, because we see it all over the counter. That's all you get from me, don't ever ask again.
That and pizza, and maybe extra pizzas for legal counsel.
So, we, we have a motion and a second, and any other further discussion? Seeing none? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, the budget is adopted. All right, the budget is adopted. Then we got the property tax, categories of property taxes in there too, so. All right, we are done with our official business. Any other things that have been happening that you want to talk about before we sign off?
He'll read the calendar.
Oh.
He will read the calendar.
I was on vacation, so now you're going to have to remind me I have something else I have to do. If, Gloria, if you hadn't done that, Mark would have popped his head out and said, "Do you want to read the calendar?" Thank you. Okay, so, the calendar for this upcoming week, let's see, after today, Wednesday at 1:30, Capitol Community Television CCTV taping at the CCT Office 575 Trade Street, Southeast Salem. At 2 o'clock today, Willamette, Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative Task Force Financial Subcommittee in the Silverton Conference Room here on the fifth floor. Today at 3 o'clock, Insight Board of Directors and Mid Willamette Job Council Meeting. Are you going to that?
I am.
Okay. We're going to go do that. I got to read the conflict of interest statement, see if we're going to approve that. Friday, the 24th at 9:00 a.m., tour North San Diego Fish Program, that's going to be fun. I'm looking forward to that. Have to figure out where to drop my trailer or something on that tour because I'm going to have my truck and trailer tomorrow. Friday, the 24th at 6:45 is Salem Leadership Foundation Annual Fancy Dessert at the Salem Convention Center, 200 Commercial Street, Salem. I guess I forgot to go back on the Friday from 9:00 to 4:00, the tour of the San Diego Fish Program. We're going to be starting at 2,700 East San Diego Street in State, and that'll last most of the day with Senator Gerard, right? He's going to go with this.
Just let me, why don't you bring, this is, all works out. Why don't you drop your trailer off at my house and I can show you the progress of my garden flowers that are going to win the blue ribbon at the fair? It'd be good for you to see it.
Well, but I want to end up, I want to end up with my trailer up in Detroit at the end of the tour, so I don't know how that's going to...
All right, never mind.
We'll talk about that later, yeah. So, on the 27th, Monday at 8:30, we'll have a calendar review in the Silverton Conference Room here on the fifth floor. Monday, the 27th, at 9:00 a.m., we have management update here in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. Monday at 11:00 a.m., Board of Commissioners Chief Administrative Officer meeting, executive session if needed pursuant to ORS 192.6602ABDFHI in the Silverton Conference Room here in the building. Monday, the 27th, at 2:00 p.m., executive session for bargaining pursuant to ORS 192.6602D in the Silverton Conference Room. Tuesday, 8:30 a.m., the 28th, Community Corrections Board meeting, Silverton Conference Room here on the fifth floor. And Wednesday, back here for our board session. Anything else? Thinking?
No, it just always seems anticlimactic. We work so hard on the budget, they start, you know, first of the year, and we hear little pieces and go through all the process and let it's just done, nobody comes. One, one, but there was no questions or complaints, a couple funny looks I saw, but it does seem like it just goes and you go about your business.
Well...
And it's a big amount of money and a big amount of service.
You know, unless you have a passion for something or you're total junkie, you wouldn't be here for the budget presentation.
And it's, you know, it's funny, out of that huge amount of money, it's the little things that you notice, like, so are the dollars in for the signs up at North Fork?
Right.
You know, it's like $5,000 or something, but it's, they're, they're such critical things, you know, to make sure that they're there. And is the playground equipment in for the, for La Biche Park? So, I mean, when I'm going through the budget, I'm just looking for those little things that we've had discussions with community members about, had issues with our departments about to, to, to make sure that it's all theirs.
And if you notice over the years, that's what the bites have been over the tiny little things that are important.
And, you know, it's, it's, it's great, like, we added that one deputy up in the canyon, and Sheriff already pointed out this weekend, you know, that problem they had up there and how that's going to make a difference.
Right, absolutely.
So, yeah, it, it's good, we, we can see the changes and the difference and, you know, I guess we don't hear about things until there's a problem. As I've always said, safety first and last, and in the restaurant business that I grew up in, people assume that it's a safe place to go to eat, and it's only a problem when you have a hepatitis outbreak or E. coli outbreak, then, then you're in trouble. So, they just take it for granted. You got to do it.
I'm sure you saw all those health inspectors in Indonesia, did you? Probably not.
Uh, no, I, I did not. I guess you've signed all these, right?
I have.
Okay. All right. Anything else you want to add?
No.
Okay, I think we will adjourn.